4:59. I call this five o'clock session together to order and I recommend that the board adjourn to a closed executive session as permitted under limited personnel matters as permitted under section ten dash fifteen dash one H two N M S A nineteen seventy eight of the New Mexico Open Meeting Act specifically to discuss the superintendent attendance formative evaluation. I move that the board adjourn to the closed executive session as permitted under limited personnel matters as permitted under section ten fifteen one H two of the New Mexico Open Meeting Act specifically to discuss the superintendent's formative evaluation. Do I have a second?
I second.
I need a roll call.
Jeffrey Lawson, aye.
Albert Chavez, aye.
Danny Ng, aye.
Lynda Hudson, aye. All right, we can adjourn.
I'd like to call this session from the executive session. I moved that the board adjourned from the closed executive session. Do I have a second?
A second.
The matters discussed in the closed executive session were limited to those specified in the motion for a closed executive session. No other topics were discussed and no other business matters were conducted, nor any action taken. I ask for a roll call vote to come back in.
Jeff Lawson, aye.
Lindsey Donner, aye.
Alpert Chivas, aye.
Denny Young, aye.
Lynda Hudson, aye.
Okay. We are now out of executive session. And would now like to call the 6:00 PM regular meeting to order and would like for us to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, what are we doing? Am I given?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, at this time, we have item C, which is an action, adoption of agenda. Mr. Viviano.
Madam President, members of the board, before we move on to adoption, I'd like to be able to change with the board's approval, moving item 6A, Moriarty High School Student Council Report.
Okay.
And move it up to section two, A, number five. So it would become after the student achievement awards.
Okay.
We have a student council member with us, and he's also part of the choir. And so we'd like to just be able to have him follow, follow suit and then talk about where that agenda item goes in the future.
Okay.
So that's my recommendation.
That's your recommendation. All right, Superintendent Viviano has recommended that we make a change in our agenda for moving the school, what if I ask, the student
Council report.
Yeah, the student council report up to A5 to follow this achievement awards. Do I have a motion for that? A second?
A second, and I'd like to make that permanent if we could.
Duly noted.
Duly noted, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passed. I now would like to welcome all our guests. It's so nice to see this room so full of people and happy faces. And we're just excited to see what we have for us in store tonight. So we have a lot of representation from the school district. So welcome to all and may we enjoy what we're going to celebrate. And next is item E, approval of the minutes, Superintendent Viviano.
Madam President, I recommend approval of minutes from the regular meeting, school board meeting that happened on March 18th, 2025.
Okay, Superintendent Viviano has recommended that we approve the minutes from our March 18th, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion? A second?
All second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we're good.
Thank you.
Now moving into section two is the superintendent's board, board's comments and commendations. Under section A, we have student staff recognition, Superintendent Viviano.
Madam President, members of the board, staff members and members of the community, families and friends that have joined us tonight. We have a few of our groups and some individual recognitions we'd like to present. And to start off, if we could have the Moriarty High School Choir and Ms. Adriana Aragon, if she wouldn't mind coming up. And you guys, so this time, face that camera over there. It's a little different than in the past, yeah, I just, yeah. So this looks like with our messengers, right? Yep, this is a messenger and we'll let Ms. Aragon give us information on the great accomplishment that these students had and the other choirs in competition a few weeks ago.
Yeah, so last weekend we had our, so our state choir contest and our Moriarty High School Advanced Treble Choir and our Messenger School competed.
Okay, so the Advanced Treble Choir and the Messengers just competed at the NMAA State Choir Contest. And the Messengers won the state championship in the 4A division and the Treble Choir won the A through 5A treble division with a score of 90.633 and the Messengers won with a 94.833. That's it. Oh yeah, it is. This is the first time in Moriarty High School history that this has happened, which is really cool. This is also only the third time in NMAA history that one school has won two divisions at the state contest. So we're really, really proud of that too.
There you go, yes. Yeah, well done, well done. Madam President, members of the board, any words for them?
Thank you for coming and congratulations.
You guys enjoy it?
Nice medals.
All right, Madam President, members of the board, members of the audience as our choir students exit. Up next, we have MESD FFA, Mr. Henson. You want to bring this, there you go. Spot him out of a crowd. Looking great. Thank you guys for coming. We'll let Mr. Henson and the students give us all the information on their great accomplishments.
Okay, before you, I have some of our Moriarty FFA members. Since January, we've been hard on the road doing judging, CDEs, career development events. And these are the five teams that placed in the top five at the beginning of April when we were down in Las Cruces for the week at state judging. I dig notes, we did a lot of it. Agronomy, they won first place, they're state champs. The team consisted of Caleb Cook, Lexi Goodrum, she was fifth high individual, Jeremiah Young, fourth high individual, then Madison Satterfield, first high individual in the state. Livestock was third with the team Lexus Corvin, Camre Chavez, James Tucker and Heidi Tucker being second high individual in the state. Our livestock team, oh, sorry, double back to agronomy. Agronomy will be representing the state of New Mexico this fall at the National FFA Convention, competing in agronomy. And then livestock will also be competing this fall, four days prior at the American Royal. Nursery, landscape, they got third. The team consisted of Cody Kinsey, Ashlyn Allman, Emma Rose Chavez and Peyton Butler, and she was fifth high individual. Our entomology team got fourth, consisted of Molly Eisenberger, Madison Satterfield, Lily Murdock-Poff and Caleb Cook. And our entomology team, they are qualified to go to the Entomology, Entomology National Invite at Tarleton State in May. And veterinary science, we got fifth. And the team consisted of Logan Standforth, Emma Rose Chavez, Ashlyn Allman and Heidi Tucker. And she was also second high individual in that also. At state this year, we took 10 teams, five of them walked the stage and received hardware. And me and Mr. Pittman, we're blessed with the students that we have, with the coaches that we have and the community that we get to represent. So, thank you.
Mr. Yum? Can I ask a question? Who are your guys' coaches? Which, who, who coaches which team?
For, for entomology, it's Mr. Pittman. For livestock, it's Mr. Thomas Smith. For veterinary science, it's Haley.
And for nursery landscape, it is Justin.
Can I ask, where's nationals going to be?
For
the agronomy, I think, no, the
Yeah, agronomy.
Agronomy, yeah.
It'll be in Indianapolis. The American Royal, where the livestock team is going to is Kansas City.
Kansas City.
And then for entomology, it's Tarleton University.
Okay.
They host the national invite.
Where's Tarleton? Somewhere in Texas? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well done.
Congratulations.
All right, next, Madam President, members of the board. We have with us tonight Moriarty High School student athlete, power lifter, there he is. I was looking for him, Dominic Montano, as well as his coach, Gabe Romero. This is the first year that we've had powerlifting at Moriarty High School. Implemented it, it's a winter sport, right? It bleeds into winter and spring. And Dominic will, and his coach will let us know how, how well he did and why he's here tonight.
So this was our, our first year doing powerlifting. And Dominic went to, qualified for state, went to state and ended up getting third place. He squatted 425 pounds, benched 220 pounds and deadlifted 500 pounds. So he, he did a really good job. You know, it's our first year having powerlifting, you know, but one of those things that Dominic has been in the weight room for four years, working hard, you know, and so he wasn't sure if he was going to do it. I'm glad he did because he did a great job for us.
Congratulations, Dominic.
Yes.
And Coach, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Madam President, members of the board and members of the audience. It's a, an honor to be presenting these, these next awards. These next awards are the New Mexico School Board Association Student Achievement Awards. These awards are sponsored by the New Mexico School Board Association and are presented to individuals by local board members throughout the state that have played an important role in improving student achievement and helping the districts run the way that we need to for, for our students. And so tonight with us, we have, if you don't mind, Madam President, I'll go one at a time and present their awards. I don't know if you guys want to go down as well? All right. All right, so our first excellence in student achievement award goes to staff member who's been with the Moriarty Edgewood School District for 23 years, I believe, in different positions on, in Edgewood Schools as well as the Moriarty side and most currently in the Moriarty Edgewood School District Athletic Department. And so we'd like to congratulate Lynda Apadaka on achieving this award. Coach Naya?
Congratulations, Lynda. You know, when we first heard about the award, we got it through an email from Mr. Viviano and the first thing Lynda says, "Coach Naya, what'd you do?" I didn't do anything, this came from the board, you know, congratulations. I know she doesn't like to spotlight stuff, but this is a word well learned and well deserved. You know what she does for our department, what she does for our coaches, what she does for our students is second to none. So Lynda, congratulations.
Madam President, members of the board, members of the audience. Our next staff member is in, I believe his 27th year working for the Moriarty Edgewood School District. He's done work inside the classroom in the math departments as well as outside with the athletic departments. And so for, you know, over two decades, he's been servicing and working closely with our students. So we'd like to recognize tonight, Mr. Howard Henderson.
So Mr. Henderson, this is, whoa. He's, he's breaking stuff. So as Superintendent Viviano pointed out, he, he's been in our district for 27 years, driving from the west side of Albuquerque. He's dedicated to our district. He, he's about kids. He does a lot for our students and not only for the kids, but their growth and their learning. And, you know, he's a tremendous asset to the district. So thank you, Howard, for everything you do.
Our next recipient is from the MESD IT Department. Came to us, started off as a teacher and saw that his skills would enhance and really be good on the team, on the IT team. So we had conversations and decided to go and has done a tremendous job as one of three in our IT department. And for a district our size, you know, that's, that's a lot of hustling and a, and a lot of work. Without our IT department, we definitely don't have student achievement. So I'd like to congratulate Mr. Lucas Hibler on receiving this award. And not with us tonight are the other members of the IT Department, Paul Tejans and, and Sean O'Donnell. Again, it's a team of three that, that have done a tremendous job of putting systems together, not only for their, their, their department themselves, but they work on the software, they work on the hardware and the internet, you know, system for us. So thank you guys, appreciate it. And our last recipient tonight is standing to my, or sitting to my right here. We'd like to recognize and thank Ms. Jennifer Burson for everything that she's done in learning services to keep that department going as well as the other departments that she's worked in in her 16 years in the Moriarty Edgewood School District. So congratulations, Jennifer, and thank you.
So while she's giving hugs, I'm just going to say the work that Jennifer does is, is much like, I think, all of our clerical staff. But the work that Jennifer does definitely sometimes I think goes under the radar and is unnoticed by, by, just because everybody's so busy. And, and Jennifer is the reason that teachers get curriculum. And Jennifer is the reason that teachers get curriculum. Jennifer is the reason that school supplies are delivered when we order those. Jennifer is the reason that we're able to do school, you know, instructionally, really. She is instrumental, and I think we forget about that. So, she is the backbone of the Learning Services Department, and she absolutely is just amazing in all that she does.
Yes, yes. Thank you again. All right, Madam President. We did approve to move up the Moriarty High School Student Council report. So, I thought I saw Sergio, there he is. Yeah, Sergio, does mind coming up to address the board? Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Madam President, members of the board, howdy. Hello, guys. So, I am Sergio Reyes, I'm a part of, I'm the historian of the council. And first off, I'd just like to say, we're gonna, I'm gonna recognize again, Messengers of the Best Trouble Choir getting first, Dominic Montano getting third at state for powerlifting, and then our FFA people for, at their state. And then, we also had robotics, our robotics team, our first-year robotics team going to world championships this year in Dallas. And then I'd also like to recognize NHD, National History Day. This year, they had a very tight competition and placed fourth, and they had a three-way tie for second. They did a website for the Soviet-Afghan War. They also had like an interview with a refugee, I think. But it was Andrew, Andrew Ritter, Danny Gonzalez, Petlagrino Sanchez, Donovan Barba and Boden Moore. And then, we also are going to be having prom, May 10. And then we have our graduation, again, is outside. And then I'm gonna inform of the week of what's happening during graduation week, if I can find it. I'm sorry. Okay, so Monday, I think it's called Baccalaureate Gloria, where we go to the church and we just celebrate the religions. And then Wednesday is senior checkout. That's when we get our cap and gowns, and then we also do our senior awards then. Thursday is our graduation rehearsal, and then also our senior walkthrough. We're gonna start with the high schools and then go to the elementary schools and then go around. And then Friday is graduation. Okay. We also, for Teacher Appreciation Week, Student Council and Mr. Johnston is gonna be helping us. We're gonna be doing, we're gonna be having help with the Wellness Committee, and we're gonna create a fun celebration for the teachers. And there's gonna be lunch provided, and the Student Council members are gonna be giving lunch to the teachers. And then I'd like to talk about Youth in Government. So, Andrew Ritter and Boden Moore, they got runner-up for best house bill. And then, me and my co-counsel, Ryder McCutcheon, we got runner-up for best judicial brief. Isabel Urioste got best lobbyist. And then McKenna Hatton ran for youth governor, but she did not get the position sadly. Anyways, Yasmin Miranda, she got into the finals for Justicing in the Judicial Branch. And then also nine students applied for the Conference on National Affairs. And that's everything I have for you guys. Question?
Thank you, Sergio. That's a great report. Thank you.
What day are you doing, serving the teachers? What day are you serving the teachers?
Oh, Lord. I know it's Teacher Appreciation Week. I think, I think it's the Wednesday, if I'm sure, but I don't know.
Thank you. And congratulations on Youth in Government.
Yes.
Thank you, Sergio.
All right, now we move on to Item B, which is Principals and Athletic Director Reports. Anybody have any comments or questions for the principals?
I do. First, I was gonna ask Moriarty Middle School if they had an update on National History Day. Looks like some kids went to state competition on the 11th, if I remember correctly.
We had a state champion. We had two students, Washington Morales and Pickle. They won their division with their performance. I didn't get the result until afterward, I think. So, yeah, so we have kids going to these.
Awesome, cool. Thank you.
Congratulations.
If I may, Madam President, Ms. Donner will be inviting those kids in May.
Good, good. Awesome, cool. I think I'll have a comment or a question for Erin, and I guess it's Rob as well, because it was a joint effort. In your report, Erin, it was talking about the NASA and the MASA project that you did. Could you describe that a little bit more? I thought it was awesome.
It's an after-school club that we have, and that's because Becky Carlisle puts that on. I had to go mortar for word from her. And so, everything was just from her data. She asked if she could skip out early last Friday to get their queue down to a competition in Los Cruces. I believe it's called Teachers in Space that she belongs to. And she played very well at that. And our NASA club's not a youth club yet, but I think that's where it goes.
Yeah. I mean, that thing went up in space, they said, right?
Right.
It went up.
The students in the group are interested in music. And so they're creating this block that will go up and is able to detect sound in space. And they're playing these in space to see if there's like distortion or how the sound changes. This is all Becky could explain this better than I can.
Well, thank you. Congratulate her, yes.
Ms. Donner had another question.
Yeah, and then I had a question for Moriarty Elementary. I was just wondering if you could elaborate on what the reset in learning and behavior expectations entails, or what that means.
So, we did a reset, first spring break and then finished after spring break. We did grade-level morning meetings. So, we are a class in school and we do morning meetings in our classrooms, but we did full grade-level morning meetings in our cafeteria. So, like, all 95 of our second-grade students came to the cafeteria and did a full-grade morning meeting and just impressed. But it means to be kind, to be safe and to be good. And just kind of reset some of those expectations that we would then experience to finish the work.
Awesome.
Thank you. Again, all of your reports are full of wonderful accolades about the students and their accomplishments. And we love the pictures that you put out. And I'm just excited about this year. I know you guys are gonna finish strong. It just went too fast. It's hard to believe that it's almost over. But thank you again for all that you do at your schools.
You're almost there. Like, it's really close. I mean, I know and understand everybody's a little wore out. Being married to a teacher for several years, I understand that, you know, this time of the year, maybe more about getting through it. And we appreciate it, and thank you guys for all your hard work. And what is it, seven weeks? What's the countdown? Who's got it?
Six and a half, seven.
How many days? How many days? Okay. We're good.
Item C, any news?
Again, thank you for the work that you guys do for us.
Yes. Next would be Item C would be the Board President and the Board of Education, but I really don't have anything else to add. I always get it out in my principals part. But it's just a very congratulatory year and look forward to graduation and the excitement that's with that. And seeing all the families united to celebrate their kids' accomplishments and their graduation to go on to the next chapter. So, thank you.
You know, I always got something. I just wanted to let everybody know. We've been working hard as a school board the last couple of weeks, coming together, figuring out where we've had our flaws and doing small things to get better for everybody. I want everybody to understand that. We want, we're taking our time and communicating a little bit better. We noticed we had a couple of flaws in ourselves. So we just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that we're still here. We're still, like they always say, we're really appreciative of everything you're doing, and we're gonna be holding ourselves more accountable and letting you guys know what we're thinking a little bit more. So, I hope you guys understand that.
Anything else?
You got a bunch of rookies that are becoming veterans, and it's getting better. We're understanding what we're looking for. I don't, I don't think, me personally, I understood what this job entailed when I signed up. I said I signed up to go to a meeting once a month. I signed up for a lot more than that. About, what, four retreats a year, three days, other stuff, trainings, traveling, stuff like that. It's a, it's a lot more. And for those who have done this before, I wish you'd have given me a heads up, because I might have thought a little bit more about it. But one thing we're not gonna do is we're not gonna quit on our kids. And we're gonna grow, we're gonna get better. And as we get better, hopefully, we get better as a district. So, thank you for your patience.
And I tell everybody that it's our teachers that we gotta take care of. Because if we get good teachers to teach our kids, our kids will grow up to be right. That's, you know, really true.
I thank you for the commitment of this board and appreciate working alongside you. And as three newcomers, you brought yourself up to speed pretty quick. So, thank you for your due diligence. And now we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Bibiano?
Thank you, ma'am. Madam President, members of the board. Tonight, I just wanted to, under Strategic Plan Monitoring, not necessarily bring the data that we've been looking at this year, at the different goals and the different action steps that we had. But just since we're in budget season, and that carries a lot of our conversation, that, you know, the past two weeks in particular, and moving ahead till we get our budget approved by the State of New Mexico. I wanted the board and the members of the audience and to see what we're working on in terms of getting funding that we haven't had in the district for a while. Some of it we've never had because it's new. But there's some funding that's, that's taking a time, and it goes through the Learning Services Department, then it goes to finance, and then it comes through my office, and we have conversations about it. So, you know, we're hoping that we get approved so we can use this for our CTE and work-based learning. What I asked Ms. Romero to display is simply the New Mexico Public Education Department website. And this is where the information for the funding, the grants that we're trying to secure can be read about and looked at by the public. And so the first one that we have is in highlighted in red there, and the right is called Perkins. It's a Perkins grant. And this grant simply states, this grant strengthens career technical education for the 21st century. Perkins supports the expansion of CTE. It challenges students with rigorous academic and CTE instruction and a method that prepares students for high-level, high-skill living wages or in-demand and emerging professions. I'm not gonna go through the entire list, especially those hyperlinks, because that's really where the gist of and the meat of the work is being done. I'd asked Mrs. Romero, who's, she and I have been working on it along with all of us have been, have been looking at it, because there's different components. We really are at the beginning stages, especially with, I'll get this right here. The forms that she has to fill out for Perkins. She's working on the community input, community needs assessment. If she has anything else to add on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bibiano. Madam President, members of the board. In order to apply for Perkins Funds, a major grant, and in order to do that, they, we have to complete what's called a community needs assessment. And that community needs assessment will take data that, luckily, with your work in last year, over the strategic plan, when you had the community meeting, and the input that we have gained over the course of the year with our, our participation in some career tech and work-based learning communities of practice with the state of New Mexico and Mr. Bibiano's involvement in some lanal CTE project up north. We're able to utilize that data, as well as Perkins is looking for our subgroup populations, students with disabilities, our English language learners, our students from poverty, and their school data. They'll take all of that, along with our industry, in our region industry, and members of, of the businesses and community industries around this region. Data from them, we populate all of that into a needs assessment. And then we're able to, once we turn that in, we're able to apply for funds. It looks like our Perkins Fund is only going to be about $20,000 this, this year, which is not so much, but it is a drop in the bucket that we can use to further this, you know, for our students. Once, once we apply for Perkins, that opens us up to apply then for some other grants, such as, I think Mr. Bibiano's gonna touch on next, our Next Gen Grants, which is a bigger award, upwards to almost $100,000, and Innovative Zones. That's a New Mexico-specific grant. I believe there's actually some in some neighboring states. But that's, those are even bigger grants than $100,000. And with those grants, we can really change some things and provide some new opportunities for kids.
So, once we get through Perkins, then again, like Ms. Romero said, it opens up the Next Gen. Next Gen started in 2019 with pilot groups. Slowed down when we had to, you know, unfortunately, shut schools and go that route. But now that we're back around and we have really targeted, increasing it and moving our career technical education and work-based learning, we want to look at this Next Gen funding and really try to get it, like Ms. Romero said, because of the dollar amounts that are distributed. Right in the middle of the screen, it gives a good descriptor where it says, "Funding may be used for any of the following initiatives." You know, with Perkins being a smaller dollar amount, with the increase, then we can distribute it through those different bullets. Starting at the bottom, looking at our work-based learning, moving all the way to the middle where it talks about employability skills training, you know, using student organizations and helping, helping out our students to increase their extra and co-curricular activities. Moving up to the top, career-guided exploration for middle school and high school students. And then again, programs of study and CTE-related supports. Money through Perkins and, and Next Gen is used in a variety of ways. You can get pretty creative, you know, and you let the state know exactly how we're doing it. Some, some school districts are using these funds to help out with transportation. They may be busing some of their students to Valencia UNM or to CNM to help out students who may not be able to drive to those campuses. And there's also equipment, you know, that can be purchased to enhance our program. So, that's the Next Gen. And then the last one is, is even newer to the state of New Mexico, as Mrs. Romero mentioned, and these are Innovation Zones. It's hard to kind of read up there, but, you know, Innovation Stones involves creating a distinctive graduate profile that reflects the needs of the local community, the implementation of work-based that reflects the needs of the local community, the implementation of work-based learning, CTE, capstone projects, social and emotional learning, and other programs aligned with core academics aimed at preparing students for future success in innovative and impactful ways. Um, this one expands out, this, this funding expands a little further out from CTE and work-based learning. Um, you see there, they have capstone projects, um, socio-emotional learning. I know that uh, um, a couple of school districts are using peer tutoring or peer counseling, um, where they send their students, um, using this funding to actually get trained and certified. Um, and then they're available at their high schools to help uh, their fellow students out to, if there's any, any situation or just some, you know, bumps in the road that they may come across. Um, again, this is a, a funding that, you know, going through the three, starting with Perkins, Next Gen, and then um, finishing off with Innovation Zones, um, funding that, um, we, the, the school district had Perkins. Um, Perkins has been around for a very long time. Um, kind of went away, and we think it's important to support the students um, and support the strategic plan goals with at least applying for these grants um, and preparing ourselves, you know, if it isn't, uh, doesn't go our way and we don't get the amount that we want this year, then we know where we're headed next year, so we can push even harder and, and improve um, on our, on our grant writing process. So, with that, um, Madam President, members of the board, any questions?
Thank you. No questions.
All right, thank you. Um, so Madam President, members of the board, um, members of the audience, um, we did have on our, on our agenda an action item to um, adopt the 25, 26, or at least have a discussion um, with the MESD instructional calendar. Um, again, I want to publicly apologize, um, the process of putting that calendar, the calendar together should have been um, a lot more simple for me, and I did in color code. Um, I was the one that, that did it, and um, i- in particular for, for the staff to look at. Um, and the staff's starting date wasn't correct. Um, so we thought it was, it was important to get the correct calendars out there, so the staff um, could make decisions and help us make decisions and give us some, some, some feedback. Um, so, um, with that being said, again, I, I apologize wholeheartedly um, for delaying the process. Um, and we will, we will see where we, you know, get it on the agenda sooner, sooner than later. Um, so Madam President, um, I recommend that we table um, action on the 25, 26 MESD instructional calendar um, for a, um, put it on the agenda for a future meeting.
Okay. Superintendent, thank you Superintendent Bibianno.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he's recommended that we um, table our 2025, 2026 MESD instructional calendar to a future date. Do I have a motion?
A motion. So, move to table it, second it.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is tabled. Moving into Learning Services, um, item three. Ms. Romero.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand for any questions on the board report.
Go ahead.
Um, sorry, got to regain myself here. Okay, so, uh, Building Thinking Classroom, sounds awesome. Well, it was like, ni- how many teachers? Um, Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Donner, 99 teachers are now trained. So, my question was, is there like a goal for the number of teachers that you're wanting to have trained for this? And you might have already mentioned that previously, but... Yes, ma'am. Um, our goal is that um, by the end of next year, we have every staff member trained in uh, BTC strategies. Cool. Thank you.
My only question, and I guess, I guess for clarification for everybody else is, um, in your report, we obviously have some test data from beginning of year to end of year. Can you guys kind of go over, like, if I'm looking at this correctly, in reading, we saw a, like a decline, I guess, in kindergarten first and second, and then in math, we saw the exact flip-flop, and it, it was weird, it was almost like exact flip-flop. And, you know, ma- in math, fourth, fifth, and sixth went down, and in reading, they went up, right? So, I mean, can you kind of explain, so I guess we all know that, you know, what that is and what we're looking at?
Yes, um, thank you. Um, yes, and Madam President, members of the board, um, Mr. Young, so, um, yes, exactly what you saw is correct. Um, in our proficiency, um, for, um, what, what you saw in your report was comparative growth from our August, which was our beginning of the year, um, testing in IStation in both reading and math, to April. And I gave April to you, the comparative in those, because I wanted you to see where we stood as we were moving um, and, uh, we're rolling into end-of-year testing, that students will complete in May, um, in just a few weeks. And that is the summative data, um, that, um, will be, the state will take. Um, so, what you saw in um, proficiency levels, um, when we're looking at reading, um, we did see, um, in kindergarten, we've, you know, we grew a, a percentage in first grade. Um, definitely, there's a, a little drop there by about 7%. Um, in second grade, we grew three, third grade, four, fourth grade, five, and then um, fifth grade, 5%. Um, and then significantly, though, I want to talk about also the level drops from, um, the decrease in the amount of students that moved out of um, Level 1, which, um, you know, makes that, means that they're showing some growth there and, and um, showing some more proficiency in their reading. Um, but, so that was reading. Let me go to math and then I'll, we'll finish the, I'll, I'll explain. So, in math, yes, what you saw was an increase um, in our proficiency levels, um, fours and fives. Um, we had, we went from 42 to 53 in Kinder, in first grade, they grew from 28% to 60. Um, 12% in second grade to 20, uh, 27 to 18 in third grade, 39 to 28 in fourth grade, and then 24 to 28 in fifth grade. Um, so, those, those numbers are significant, um, especially in math, because um, IStation gives students questions that they have not learned yet. They are on grade level, um, for instance, first grade. Um, they are on level, first grade, all the standards that um, are priority, or that IStation um, uh, signifies, I guess, as priorities. Those are given to first graders at the beginning of the school year. So, that's why you see that, you know, um, 12% in second grade, and then now, we're now, you know, at 20, or the 28 in first grade, and we're now at 60. Our teachers, we have a big group of teachers in the room, um, so I just, you know, they are, that shows, um, they're working through those proficiency maps, they, they've identified the correct um, priority standards and learning targets, and they're working really hard, and kids are learning. Um, you know, we do have um, a spot that we definitely need to um, really hyper-focus on, and that's that early literacy. We know that, the state knows that, they've, um, you know, we've invested a lot of time and money and effort on early literacy in this district, and um, it's going to come. We're just doing it little, little pieces at a time.
Thank you. I think it's important for people to know that, in math, we're not, not progressing, we're just, it's not something they've seen.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for adding the strategic goal into your narrative. It makes it easy for us to flow and keep moving along with those, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to comment on the um, Building the Thinking Classroom, and when you had um, Anya, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Corbuvius?
Coruvius, yes.
Coruvius, okay. And I happened to come to the district office one of those days when you were having one of your sessions. And that was just so exciting to see all the teachers working together on their little class um, projects, on how to prepare a thinking task, and then how to evaluate the act, the active, you know, the activities and stuff of the students. So, I think it's just a hands-on, wonderful plus for us to be adding this into our, into our curriculum. And it was fun to be there and be a part of it and just watch it.
Thank you, Madam President.
Very exciting.
Members of the board. Yes, thank you so much. We enjoyed having you.
I guess that's it. Thank you.
That's it. All right, um, Madam President, we do have, um, I think Ms. Natalie is pulling it up now.
Okay.
Under, uh, Learning Services, um, action item. It is the New Mexico Public Education Department's Unified Application for Federal Grants. This is an attempt um, to consolidate all the different applications that have been submitted throughout the years, under exactly what it says, a unified application. Um, we are a pilot district. Um, all districts will be moving to this, we've been told already, so they, um, for next year, and uh, you know, again, if you see, there's ESAC compliance, there's IDBA, um, IDEA, um, as well as the other applications. So, Mrs. Romero would like to explain this before we move ahead with action.
Madam President, thank you, Mr. Bibianno. Uh, members of the board, um, as Mr. Bibianno did say, this is the first year that we did this. We are one of 13 districts in the state of New Mexico, um, who is, are completing this unified application. This has been, um, it started in early October, and we've had weekly hour or 90-minute calls every Tuesday in order to get the components of this um, completed. Typically, our, before this, each um, federal program had its own application that was um, uh, very cumbersome, and um, had to be approved in multiple steps from, from the board, um, all separately. Also, um, lot, all of the applications asked for the same things, so it was over, it was just input, again, input, and you really couldn't copy and paste it, um, so it, it was very cumbersome. Um, this definitely has streamlined the process for what I, I think the districts in New Mexico, and it was um, a lot easier to navigate. Um, so I'm going to take you through it um, as quickly as I can, um, and spend some time on the dollars. Um, so, um, there are multiple um, sections in here. In order to apply for, for federal funding, um, we have to um, agree to assurances. And I do have a copy of the 10 pages of assu- assurances, um, if you would like to read them. Um, I can get them to you, um, but it, it says we're going to follow the laws on how we're going to spend federal dollars, um, and um, what those, where those dollars can go to. The next thing is the GAAP statement, and the GAAP statement is about how we are going to disperse the dollars, and that, um, all of the dispersment of the GAAP estate, or of the um, federal dollars will be spent um, according to, um, well, with, within equity of all subgroup populations. So, students with disabilities, students for, um, that live in poverty, our English language learners. Um, and so that we have to take equity into um, consideration. Um, this um, GAAP statement, I can also get you if you would like to read. Um, as we go into Domain 1, we have to um, certify that our curriculum in all content area comes off of the New Mexico State Highly Qualified Instruction, or um, High Quality Instructional Materials um, list, and so I have to um, select each curriculum for each grade span, span in all content areas. If it is not on the adopted list, or falls below recommended, um, so on the Instructional Materials um, list, there are um, cri- or categories, um, re- recommended, recommended with reservation, and not recommended. And so if, even if it's a recommended with reservation, I have to justify why um, the district is using that curriculum. Um, on, in our district, as you know, we've talked about, um, as we adopted science last month, um, we use a team, and so we use rubric grading. Um, the teams typically, especially when it's in um, secondary, it's the entire department, and it's the, that team's choice and recommend, recommendation of what um, to choose. So, that's what I have to justify, um, those recommended with reservation categories off of. So, that's what this section is. Going down to Priority 2A, I have to um, justify and certify that all of our um, instructional materials for students with disabilities are also um, evidence-based and um, utilized within intervention. We will be looking for a Tier 3 or Special Education Math Intervention Program this year. And then um, I have to, um, we are also able to, um, if we qualified for something um, um, called RLIS, which we do not, that's why there's a no there. So, I have to scroll back up. I have to, um, as I talked about, um, just um, justifying that um, our services do include students with disabilities and English language learners, because this application does um, uh, pertain to our Title III um, federal grant and our IDEA grant. So, again, they've just taken all, um, really five grants and put it into one application. So, um, that's why these questions are there. Um, I have to justify professional development in the areas of curriculum, our intervention for early literacy and reading, um, the materials that we utilize. Um, how, and then as we get down here, I'm talking about um, how we are increasing our students with disabilities' graduation rate and decreasing the dropout rate for students with disabilities. Workforce is specific to our Title II budget. Remember that Title II is um, specifically for teacher recruitment and retention. So, um, we utilize those, that funding for um, our mentorship, um, uh, for teachers, new teachers, we utilize that money also for um, professional development, um, for the entire district. Um, so these were just yes or no questions, um, and then I had to attach um, the 80-day mentor and mentee report. As we come down in here to compliance, this is where we get into um, the dollars. So, um, here on the screen, you see um, the allocation. Um, this is our um, allocation from the state of New Mexico for the 25, 26 school year. In Title I, 672,473 and some change, I think, yeah, 80 cents. Um, we do not receive Title I Part C or D. For Title II, $122,000. For Title III, um, that's um, instruction for our students that are English learners above and beyond, um, $15,786. And then Title IV, um, $46,843. Title IV is for student success and achievement, and we split, split those funds between Moriarty Middle School and Moriarty High School. Um, we do not service or take grant for Title III Immigrant or that RLIS that I um, talked about earlier. Um, as you can see, um, we do not have any carryover funds in any of our grants. This is the first time, um, Ms. Young, would you say, since we've both been here? Yes. So, um, we've been, I guess the term is kicking the can down the road um, with, with the utilization of carryover funds um, for 10 years. Um, and we have run out of those carryover funds, so the funds that we had, the additional funds that we didn't use from last year, um, up to three years ago, we could use them for this year. Um, we are out of those, and that's due to um, the fact that many things, but specifically the in, the teacher, um, or the salary increases that are not um, funded through federal grants. So, every time there's a, a staff increase in salary, um, you know, the SEG might go up a little bit, but federal dollars have not gone up, so we're, we're trying to cover those, and we've just been using carryover, carryover, and, and we're finally out of carryover. So, our allocations are all the funding that we have for this upcoming school year. Transferability, um, for federal programs from, um, especially Title II and Title I, you can transfer funds. Um, this would be for districts that... This would be for districts that might not need, I don't know how, but might not need professional development, or, and they might move those Title II funds into Title I, or vice versa. We do not do that in this district, so that's why you see zeros in those columns. We also have to determine, if we had a private school within the district boundaries, we would have to offer consultation services with them, and we could end up giving some of our title funds to the private school. We used to service Edgewood Christian School and Calvary Chapel Christian School. Those two schools have closed, and so we no longer have any. And so the answer is no, and we do not have to consult with those private schools any longer. All right, so Title I. So with Title I, there's seven ways that we can fund and rank schools within the district. And so before we do that, we have to determine our set-asides, and we have some, we have some needs that we have to take care of before we can determine how we're going to spend our funds. And those needs are, when any school district that receives title funds, we have to set aside at least one percent for parent and family engagement. We also have to dedicate some funds for homeless children and youth. So that's what you see here. We put ten thousand dollars towards parent and family engagement. That will be split amongst the eligible and funded Title I schools. And then homeless children and youth, as you know, we did not receive the McKinney-Vento Grant for the next three years. So we put a little bit more than we have in the past in that, so that we could, you know, at least provide something for our kids that need that, that are McKinney-Vento eligible. Right now, in our district, there are currently fourteen hundred and forty-one students residing in Title I areas that are low income. So those are our set-asides. The next is the way that we identify our students. So as you see, there are seven options for identifying eligibility based off of poverty rates, and/or to get the poverty rate, there are seven ways to do it. There's, A and C are the most typically used. C is the most widely used across the state of New Mexico. And what it does is it takes the direct certification from all of the students in the schools, and then does a, gives it a 1.6 multiplier on the back, or on the end of that. So we use Option C. And as you can see, I'm sorry, this is, let me try to make it smaller for you. Okay. As you can see, what that does is it gives you the rates with each. I don't know if I can, can I do it? No. Well, it'll give you the rates for each school on each option. Very sorry that this is this window. Okay, so for instance, I'm going to focus on Option C, because that's what we use. All right. So Edgewood Middle School is sixty-two point four percent poverty rate. Moriarty Elementary, one hundred percent. Moriarty High School, seventy-eight point four percent. Moriarty Middle School is one hundred percent. Route sixty-six is at eighty point six percent, and South Mountain Elementary is at fifty-four point six percent. I could have just went down, sorry. So here you go. The district average percentage of students that are total poverty rate average is eighty point two percent in the district. We have the option of making high schools or secondary schools eligible. We are not doing that, because hot off the press this year, which was something that we were not expecting. Our, we have two options. We can decide, we have to decide on a minimum low-income student rate for eligibility of Title I. And so our option rate would either be thirty-five percent, which would make all of our schools Title I eligible, or eighty point two percent. We would, we always use the higher number, so you get the most effectiveness out of those dollars, and serve the students that are the most, where the most poverty is, the schools where the most poverty is. So based on those numbers, we have three schools, Moriarty Elementary, Middle, and High, that are eligible. However, did I say Route sixty-six? Moriarty Elementary, Middle, and Route sixty-six, yeah. However, in the state, or in federal, in the United States, any school that has over seventy-five percent poverty has to be funded. So in Title I, there is, you're eligible, but then there's funded. You can be eligible and not be funded if you're under, or, yeah, if you're under seventy-five percent. So say we were at a school, we had a school that was at seventy-three percent. They'd be eligible, but we could choose not to fund them, okay? Seventy-five percent and above, we have to legally fund them. This is the first time that we've ever seen Moriarty High School be above that seventy-five percent. Last year, they were sixty-four percent. So Moriarty High School is now a funded Title I school. The reason that this is significant is because the allocation amount did not change, although our schools that are, have to be funded, increased. Okay? So after the set-asides, what we have available is six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and seventy-six cents, and we fund per pupil. So we start with Moriarty Elementary, they are funded at five hundred and fifty dollars per pupil with their total school allocation of two forty-nine, seven hundred. Moriarty Middle is funded at five twenty-eight with their school allocation of one twenty-eight, three oh four. Route sixty-six is funded at five hundred dollars per pupil with an allocation of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And then Moriarty High School will be funded at two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty cents for a total school allocation of a hundred and twenty-four thousand and seventy-two dollars. We do not have any Tier Two schools that might be eligible, and we choose to fund. And then we have Tier Three schools that do not qualify. So getting into the actual funding. This is going to have a lot of numbers on it, so just bear with me, because now we're moving into all four grants. This is the expenditure detail where it breaks down all of them. So I'm going to start with Title I, and then we're going to go to Title II, Title III, and Title IV. Okay? So. For Title I. We fund the salaries of instructional coach at Moriarty Elementary. Principals, if I leave something off, please just chime in. This year, we will fund instructional coach at Moriarty Elementary, mental health counselor at Moriarty Elementary, yes, instructional coach at Moriarty Middle School, and an instructional coach at Route sixty-six Elementary. That's all the salaries, and that amount is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and six dollars and forty-four cents. The benefits have to be split out, because it's a different line. Those total a hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and eleven cents. Going back up to Title I. Supplies and materials for Title I schools, forty thousand dollars split. Antonette, did we split that by pupil? Oh, here it is. By per pupil. So that amount will be per pupil amongst the four schools. For Title I, professional learning, and the allocation for Moriarty High School New, we had some conversation about that, and we are going to dedicate Moriarty High School's allocation of Title I dollars for this first year solely to professional learning. They, you know, the schools that are not Title I, we have to use Title II or General Operational, which we don't have a lot of, and so we really want to focus on professional learning, and so we thought it would be a good idea to be able to use those funds for professional learning for our staff at the high school. The additional professional learning dollars at, that is in this, a hundred and thirty-three, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, will be divided also amongst the other Title I schools. The other cost that is occurred here is indirect costs, which go to fund all of the work that the business office does, and so from each federal grant. So out of Title I is twenty-seven thousand and three hundred dollars. So that's the Title I budget. In Title II, our award was a hundred and twenty-two thousand, eighty-six dollars. Five, or fifty-seven hundred dollars is coming out of, for indirect cost. And the rest of that is, as you can see here, Title II, substitutes for professional learning. So when teachers will attend training, we dedicated sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Stipends for professional learning off of contract, so summer work, ten thousand dollars, and then ninety thousand dollars for professional learning for all schools and staff in the district. The next is EL, and our Title III. Our allocation is fifteen thousand and seventy-two dollars. Indirect cost is seven hundred and fourteen dollars. And that money we've set towards professional learning and TESOL certification, a hundred percent. Then the last is Title IV. This amount was drastically reduced. We were able to pay for a full FTE of a student success coach that is split amongst, or between Moriarty High School and Moriarty Middle School. We are no longer able to do that, so we're paying for, this will pay for point six five of the salary, which is about thirty-four eight, and then the benefits is nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Operational will be covering the other piece of that salary. And significantly, I really want to let you know that we had to pull out the Director of Learning Services salary, the Administrative Support salary, and the District Instruction and Assessment Coordinator's salary, which totaled about, well, it was over four hundred thousand dollars, right? Oh, and two mental health counselors out of Title I this morning, in order to meet this. So the operational budget is absorbing, absorbing over four hundred thousand dollars of salaries and benefits from what was housed in Title I, and also a reading specialist. Yes. So that's significant to know, you know, again, with the reduction of federal dollars and the reduction, the use of the carryover to cover those salary increases. So that's title funding. I'm not done yet. Thank you for bearing with me. All right, the next one. Oops, sorry. Did it go out? Okay. Idea B. So Idea B, as you can see, we have not got allocations. So we don't know how much money we are getting at all. But the application is due, so they said, "Just work on it as best you can." So here we are. So again, we do not have any private school, and so we do not have to set aside any dollars for private school child find or coordination. In our district, we already provide child find services for any child within our district boundaries. So if they, between the ages of three and five, before they're in preschool, or while they're in preschool, even if they might attend a private childcare, we still are responsible for screening for any disability, and we set aside funds for that. We do not have any local, in district charter schools, so we do not have to provide funding for that. And then as far as compliance, this is, so we have to answer if we were, if we had any finding on the Idea B thirteen categories for compliance in the United States, and we did not. We were not identified as a district with any significant disproportionality, and we are not a needs substantial intervention school, and we are not, we are adequately providing FAPE. So we are not a need support district in the area of special education. Cooperative intervention services is something that, if we had a high proportion of students that were not being screened and were not receiving services, we could be pulled into that, and we would have to identify or give money, put money aside for the screening of a specific category of students. So about six years ago, seven years ago, we got identified as a district who under-evaluated Anglo students with autism. So we had to set aside Idea B dollars specifically to evaluate students that were Anglo and might have autism. So we had to create a huge plan and set aside dollars. We are not in that situation anymore, so we do not have to set aside money. We have met maintenance of effort, so that's why there's no dollars there. We have updated our policies and procedures. They are available, and we coordinated with the Walsh and Gallegos Law Firm, and they are available on the website. Parent involvement. Ms. Ortiz, our district special ed coordinator, has been working with parents throughout the year to talk about special education services provided, any thoughts that they might have and needs, and also been sent, she's been sending parent training information to parents of students with disabilities. Then this is just where I will upload the approval and our assurance signatures here. When we talk about the expenditures, you're going to see a red box. So what Mrs. Young and I did was, this So what, um, Mrs. Young and I did was, this is, uh, best case scenario. Um, so in order to fund everything that we would, um, feel, everything we need to fund special education, um, we would need eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars for, um, Idea B and about fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars for our preschool special education. Okay, our, um, um, our six-one-nine program. Um, and that goes to cover supplies and materials in, um, the amount of fifteen thousand, um, contracted audiologists of six thousand, um, IEP tech, tech services, so, um, the platform that houses our IEPs, um, for sixteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine. Per capita, this is a very low amount. Um, but we put two thousand in for, um, parents to be reimbursed for bringing their children to school if they can't ride a school bus. Um, supplies and materials for preschool in, uh, the amount of five thousand. Benefits for the child find coordinator in the amount of thirteen, um, thousand, three hundred and forty-two. Salaries, um, this is a half of an FTE, thirty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Um, substitute coverage for IEPs in the amount of five thousand, and that is also low. Um, twenty thousand for substit-, oh, I'm sorry, that was benefits for the subs. And then twenty thousand, um, for, um, substitutes. Benefits for staff, um, out of Idea B. And then, um, we have, um, and I put them on two lines, Antoinette, I probably should fix that. Um, but we had two classes of, of, um, uh, salaries for educational assistance that we pay for out of special education. And then also, um, program specialist, our, um, we took out our, no, our coordinator and, um, our, um, administrator, who are our coordinator for Medicaid, um, our special education coordinator and our program specialists across the district. So all of that equals the eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four. Our plan is that once we get allocation, um, allocations, what we will do is we will take out the things that, um, the operational budget has this year already paid for. Things like the per capita, the substitutes, the audiologist contracted service, and, um, all of our extended school year services. Um, the operational budget has covered those this year because we could not cover it, um, out of the Idea budget. So we planned to do that, but we wanted to give you a very clear picture of everything that's needed, uh, to run special education, um, the way that we would like to. It will be run that way out of operational. But if Idea B budget could cover it, this is what, this would, is what we would definitely need. So those are our, um, this is the unified application. Um, thank you for bearing with me while I went through every single one. But, um, it is for your, um, approval tonight, and I will stand for any questions. Thank you, thank you.
Madam President.
No questions?
So I appreciate that, um, Mrs. Romero, um, thank you for going into, into the details as we move into budget, you know, kind of the theme, um, that we've had. It's interesting, um, and just so you know, again, at the beginning, Mrs. Romero mentioned that this is bringing all of those grants together. Um, all of this work used to have to be individual grants with a, um, repetition of, um, some of those text boxes over and over and over and over. Um, again, um, I believe it was last week, um, I sent, uh, Madam President, a message out about this application, um, because it is on a specific platform. Um, to be able to have anything printed out or screenshots available would have to, um, you know, be, be a, a chore. But, um, any other question, any questions, any? Mrs. Romero, good job. Mrs. Young, everyone has worked on it.
I just wanna say thank you to Antoinette. Um, she sat with me this morning. Whew, I don't know what's just happening.
Getting tired.
Deep breath, yes. Uh, she sat with me this morning for two hours, um, but we continuously talk and definitely could not do this without her, so.
Thank you, thank you both.
Yes, thank both. I have one thing to say, is G paying attention?
He's wide awake.
Taking notes. All right, thank you, Mrs. Romero. Um, you're welcome. Uh, so Madam President, um, I recommend, uh, approval of the NMPED Unified, um, Application, um, for Federal Grants.
Superintendent Viviano is recommending, uh, approval for the New Mexico PED Unified Application Federal Grants. Can I have a motion?
So move.
And a second?
A second.
Anyone? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Our next section is business. Superintendent Viviano?
Madam President, um, we have four items, um, for Consent Agenda Finance. Uh, recommend approval of the Consent Agenda Finance, all four items.
Superintendent Viviano has asked for us to recommend, uh, recommends for us to consent Agenda Finance items one through four. Can I have a motion?
So move.
A second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. Now we go down to B, Agenda B, yes, disposable fixed assets.
Uh, Madam President, members of the board, um, we have, um, unfortunately, a maintenance truck that we need to put on disposal. And, Miss Young, you wanna explain some more?
Madam President, members of the board, um, we had a maintenance truck that was involved in an automobile accident a couple of months ago. Um, not his fault, just for the record. Um, and the insurance has totaled that vehicle. But I need your permission to be able to dispose of it at this time, so. Um, and unfortunately, I'll have to be bringing you a quote soon probably to replace it because we actually have a full crew in maintenance now, and I don't have enough vehicles for them. It's a good home to have, I guess.
So Madam President, I recommend, um, uh, approval of disposable fixed assets for this, um, maintenance truck.
Superintendent Viviano has recommended approval for disposal of this maintenance truck in the fixed assets. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Do I have a second, second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Next we go to personnel, so, um, Dr. Buckley.
Yeah, please tell me.
Pardon me?
Let's back up a little bit.
Uh-oh, did I miss something? I went too fast. Never mind, all right.
Any questions for Miss Young?
In regards to? No questions? Yeah?
Madam President, members of the board, uh, for the Finance Committee, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday. It got a little off because Monday is the third Monday of the month, next Monday. But today is the third Tuesday of the month, so usually it's the day before the board meeting. But it's off a week because of the calendar, so we are scheduled to meet Monday at four. Um, Audit Committee, I will be reaching out for dates that you're available. I need to get that RFP out, but I need, we need to be able to come together as an audit committee because the RFP states that it will be open publicly. So if we have somebody show up at that date and time, we have to be prepared to open the audits. Um, so I will be reaching out to you shortly for a date that works.
Thank you, Miss Young, Mrs. Young. All right, now moving on to personnel, correct? Um, Dr. Buckley, do you have any questions or comments for Dr. Buckley?
Yeah, in looking at your report, I, I'm, I, I've not seen that we're looking for two principals.
Yeah, when I submitted the report, it was not posted at that time.
Okay, not official.
But I have it here.
Are we getting applicants, we getting people interested?
Uh, we do already.
Any other questions? Anything, Dr. Buckley, you have to share with us?
Uh, no, just happy to have maintenance.
Mm-hmm, amen. Yes. That's good. All right, thank you, Dr. Buckley. Uh, Support Services, Special Projects, and Other Items. We did the high school report. All right, are there any questions in regards to Transportation Tech Coordinator Maintenance or Food Services? Just echo on the congratulations that we have a full maintenance staff, that's awesome, thank you. All right, Mr. Viviano on Item F.
Madam President, members of the board, um, on our agenda for action is approval for out-of-state travel request. This one is for, um, the Moriarty High School Junior, um, the JROTC Junior Cadet Leadership, um, Camp at Fort Carson in Colorado, June eighth through the fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-five. Um, I recommend approval of the out-of-state travel request.
Superintendent Viviano is asking for approval for the out-of-state travel requests for the junior ROTC to go to their camp at Fort Carson on June eighth through the fourteenth. Are there any questions or comments? All right, may I have a motion? And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And Item G.
We have a second, um, out-of-state travel request. Um, this is for Moriarty High School volleyball team to attend the University of Northern Colorado Greeley. Um, it's the team volleyball camp in Greeley, Colorado, July twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Superintendent Viviano is, um, re- recommending the approval of the out-of-state travel request for the volleyball team to attend University of North Carolina, North Colorado, uh, from June twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. Is there any questions? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move to approve it.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next is moving on to Board Policy. Superintendent Viviano.
Madam President, um, um, under, um, A, we have a second read for Policy GE Retired, Retiree Return to Work. Um, this is, um, new regulation requiring local, um, administrative units, they call it, or some school districts, um, which includes, um, to maintain and distribute to its employees all internal return-to-work policies consistent with MNAT two-point-eight-two-point-five. You received, uh, the policy in, in our last meeting. Um, and so if there's any discussion, madam, um, or any questions that need to be clarified.
Any questions or comments in? I believe not.
All right, then I recommend approval of, um, this new regulation, Policy GE Retiree Return to Work.
Superintendent Viviano is asking for approval for recommendation to approve the Policy GE Retiree Return to Work. Are there any comments? If not, may I have a motion for this? I'll move that we approve the policy for GE Retiree Return to Work. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried.
Madam President, we move to Policy Advisory two forty-seven. Um, this is a policy as well as the regulation that goes with this policy. It's Drug, Alcohol, and Tobacco slash Nicotine-Free Schools. And the regu- regulation, um, is also Drug, Alcohol, and Tobacco slash Nicotine-Free Schools. Um, the policy, ADB-ADC. This policy, which previously, um, just referenced the various policy provisions, um, stated in, in our update, um, applicable to Drugs, Alcohol, Tobacco, Nicotine-Free Schools, now becomes the primary policy. And so this one be, this would be our primary policy based on, um, state legislation. Um, the regulation, um, addresses, um, signs and signage and, um, what will be required to be put on all of our campuses, um, in terms of, um, the policy, ADB-ADC. So it's a second read, ma'am, for any discussions or questions.
Are there any discussion or questions in regards to this? Okay. Superintendent Viviano.
And I recommend approval of Policy ADB slash ADC as well as the Policy Regulation ADB-ADC dash R.
Superintendent Viviano is recommending approve, um, what's the word I want, sorry? Acceptance, yes, of this Policy ADB-ADC dash Drug and Policy Regulation ADB-ADC R Drug. Are there any comments? If not, may I have a motion to?
I move to adopt.
Okay, is there a second? A second? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carried.
Moving on to, um, Policy Advisory two forty-eight, it's second read. This is, policy is a regu-, well, this, I'm sorry, this is a regulation, um, under Student Transportation, EEA dash R. This transportation regulation is amended slightly to add the full range of prohibited drugs, alcohol, and tobacco products, um, to the list of prohibited items on a school bus. Madam, it's a second read.
Okay, second read, is there any comments on this or questions, discussion? Okay.
Then I recommend the board to approve, um, Regulation, um, EEA dash R Student Transportation.
Okay, Superintendent Viviano is recommending for us to approve Policy Regulation EEA R Student Transportation. And the regulation, it's a regulation.
Just a regulation.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye? I didn't get the motion? I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead, sorry. This is, okay. May I have a motion for second reading of two forty-eight?
So move.
A second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion carried.
Policy Advisory two forty-nine. This is, um, Madam President, members of the board, an exhibit that would be, um, added to this policy. Um, it's Exhibit GB-EBB dash EA. Staff Conduct with Students. Staff Conduct with Students, yeah. This exhibit relates to Staff Conduct with Students. It is an amended, um, exhibit to add the word. Um, and so the only change is adding the word nicotine, um, twice in the exhibit as a list of prohibited items.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions, discussion? If not, no? Okay.
All right, then I recommend, um, Madam President, the board approve, um, Policy Exhibit GB-EBB dash EA, Staff Conduct with Students, as amended.
Superintendent Viviano was ask, is recommending for us to approve Exhibit GB-EBB EA, Staff Conduct with Students. May I have a motion for that?
I'll move to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Moving on to Policy Advisory two fifty, this is Policy GB-ED. You would be approving to, um, delete this entire entry because it is going to be replaced by the first, um, policy that was adopted, ADB-ADC. So this would be, um, Madam President, a second read about deletion of, um, Policy GB-ED from, um, our policy handbook.
Okay. Uh, Superintendent Viviano is recommending that we have a deletion of Policy GB-ED, Tobacco Use by Staff Members Smoking. May I have a motion? Also move? May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Carried.
Madam President, second read of Poli- Policy Advisory two fifty-one. This is Policy GCQF, Discipline Suspension, Termination, and Discharge of Professional, um, Staff Members. Um, the only change to this from our current policy is that it adds a cross-reference to the new policy that's, that was adopted, ADB-ADC. Um, so, second read, ma'am?
Second read, is there any discussion on this? Any questions? All right.
So, Madam President, I recommend a board, uh, approving, um, Policy GCQF. So, Madam President, I recommend a board approving Policy GCQF, which the change is to add the cross-reference to the new policy that was adopted in regard to drugs, alcohol, tobacco, and nicotine.
Superintendent Viviano is recommending that we accept the Policy GCQF with the amendment for Discipline Suspension Termination and Discharge of Professional Staff Members. May I have a motion?
I so move.
And a second? A second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried.
And lastly, Madam President, Policy Advisory 252, very similar to 251, but this is a Policy GDQD, Discipline Suspension Termination and Discharge of Support Staff Members. It has the same change to add a cross-reference to the new policy. Second read, ma'am?
Second read, is there any questions or comments? All right.
Then I recommend the board approve Policy GDQD with the addition of this cross-reference.
Superintendent Viviano is recommending that we accept the Policy GDQD with the cross-reference. May I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carried.
All right, thank you very much, Madam President, members of the board. We will continue on with these regulations that have changes to these policies in reference to tobacco, drug, alcohol, and nicotine use in a first read coming up in the next meeting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now we have citizen.
Yeah, citizen comment, we have one?
We do have one citizen comment.
And it's Roxanne Sadio.
Sadio, and there is a two-minute time limit. Welcome.
Hello, members.
You can hear me.
So, I am a substitute teacher. I was an educational assistant last year, and I am writing to formally address a serious and ongoing issue regarding employee breaks and wage practices within the district. In my role, I am responsible for supervising students and am not permitted to leave them unattended. Despite this, I am not being properly relieved for breaks, yet a lunch break is still automatically deducted from my pay. This is not only unfair, it is clear violation of the Fair Labor Standards Act. Federal law requires that if a break is unpaid, the employee must be fully relieved of all duties. That condition is not being met, and deducting wages under these circumstances is illegal. It's also worth noting that the FLSA does not require that employers provide breaks at all, and neither does the state of New Mexico. However, if an employer chooses to provide unpaid breaks, they must ensure the employee is completely relieved of duty. This makes it even more troubling that time is being deducted without meeting the legal requirements for an unpaid break. Adding to the concern, I was told by someone in a position of authority, and I say this with full respect, and for that person's, I'm not going to mention who it is because I do have respect for this person, but that if I don't take a break, that's on me. And also that it's not my choice to skip a break, that it's simply not acceptable. It is not my choice to skip a break. I cannot take one if I am not relieved of my duties. In fact, I would prefer to continue working through my break and be compensated accordingly. However, I am told I must take a break because it is policy. If I cannot actually be relieved of my responsibilities, yet the time is still deducted from my pay, that is not only violation of labor law, it defies common sense. Many of us are caught in this exact situation, expected to follow policy.
Your time is up, I'm so sorry, but thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is Advanced Planning. Superintendent Viviano?
Madam President, members of the board, I listed some items and some activities, school activities that are coming up towards the end of April and into May. Budget Committee meeting will be on April 22nd. I will get those invitations out tomorrow. We have an April break coming up this Friday, a remote day on April 21st. We have our regular school board meeting on May 20th, and then we do have Moriarty High School graduation on May 23rd, the last day for students. I will, like I did last year, as the elementaries, which many of them have already started to do, fill the calendar up with their promotion days or end-of-year activities, I will get that out as a list to you in my weekly updates. Yeah, that's what I'm referring to, sir. Yeah. Yes, sir. As I get them, I'll put them on.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much. And our next item is closing. So, without any further ado, it is 10 minutes till 8:00.
Madam President, I recommend adjournment of tonight's regular meeting.
I should let you do that.
That's okay.
This is a first time for some of this, so bear with me, I'm sorry.
I recommend adjournment of tonight's regular meeting.
Superintendent Viviano has recommended adjournment of tonight's meeting. Is there a motion?
I so move.
A second?
Second.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you for coming. Sorry about that.